All right, Mr. Chairman, sorry about that.
Okay. We're gonna move on down to our agenda. Our next item is an action item. This is a decision on the credit card fee moratorium. And is this something, Dave, you guys did last two weeks ago?
We just discussed it. We didn't make any decision. It was brought up in that conversation.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, at our last meeting on the, whatever, 24th, whatever the day was. And then, yeah, we just decided to bring it up as further for further discussion.
I don't know how much. Do you have any idea how much you guys make?
I think Doug's having trouble getting, are we back on?
We are, we're back.
Okay, good.
So if you think which departments, I mean, the treasurer uses it, I would assume, DMV, Driver's License Bureau.
Clerks.
Clerks.
Yep, clerks do not accept credit cards. Debit cards.
You guys accept cash?
Yes, cash and checks.
What's building department?
Yeah, building department would be one, P&amp;Z would be one. Solid waste.
We were just talking about putting in three months. Just three months now. Let's see how COVID's doing after the three months. But anything that the county could do would be to encourage people to use online resources. And that would get through the tax season. Building department by then will be pretty slow over the winter time. P&amp;Z might not be, but Driver's License, DMV are the same all the time. But if we were giving up a few thousand dollars worth of income, that, you know, would that help people?
I remember one time, we figured it was around $27,000, or I think it's probably more now, but...
A month or a year?
No, a year. In fact, it's in our budget, isn't it, Doug? Credit card fees?
That's only for solid wastes.
That's just solid waste? So it's probably a lot more than...
I just wonder if it would, you know, if it really encouraged people to use the online or not. Anything we can do to encourage online is awesome. We're supposed to have our, I don't know why, our website hasn't rolled out differently yet. I just don't know how much it will encourage people to use online.
Do you think people notice that? I mean, the one and a half percent of whatever we charge to do a credit card, do you think they notice that?
Jody said they did, and the treasurer's. But if you think about it, if you're paying a large bill, a $1,500 bill, and it's a two and a half percent, I mean, you know, that stings a minute. So it might encourage somebody to do it online.
Well, when we were down at NIC, I talked to one of the vendors down there, Access Idaho, and he said that he didn't think they would have to do that anymore because, I don't know. Maybe Jody will remember. She's coming in.
She was on the phone, but she said, yeah, they wanted to.
He said that fee should go away. Try to remember. Because you guys are all moving over to Access Idaho, which is one credit card deal for everybody. Remember, Patty?
You've been on Access Idaho for quite some time.
Yeah, I kind of hate to write that off because I think it's more than what we think it is. Let's see what Jody comes up with.
Maybe the treasurers would be the biggest one. But building permits, I mean, if we pay a building permit fee of $5,000, I mean, that's... Yeah, just trying to give them another avenue instead of coming in, but... It's just like, if I paid my $1,500 tax bill, it's $3,750. Or, you know. We're just gonna do it for three months, just to, you know. If it would encourage people to stay out, but I don't know if it will.
I'm not entirely sure it will either.
Well, if you're paying your tax bill, you have the choices using the credit card, or you could just write a check. This is what I do. I just write a check for all of it, and there's no fee.
Well, and that's what they're going to with Access Idaho is you can call now and give your account number, and they'll process just a, an electronic check.
Very good. That's what I was trying to remember.
Yeah. But you don't even have, you can, you don't have to come in then either. You can just call them and give them your account number, and they can process some electronic check.
When I was gonna say, DMV, you can do everything online right now anyways. So are we saving anything by changing or reducing our fee if people do come in the office? Because everything is currently available on, on the online version.
And I think you're either gonna be, you're either gonna feel comfortable doing things online or not. I think that, and maybe what we could do is give the treasures the authority to waive that.
The meeting has now ended.
So Jody, come on up. Give us an idea, a rough estimate about what the credit card fees are costing us.
If we went November to April, which is, November's when taxes go out, we start picking it up. We did just over 20,000 in November. Fee-wise is $18,807.
Just for the treasurer?
Just for us, yep.
Yeah, that's too expensive to waive. What if we gave you the opportunity of somebody is, you know, complaining one way or another, or talking about coming in one way or another, giving you just a one-off opportunity to waive that?
I don't know how that works because NIC just, Access Idaho just takes... When it comes to the credit card, that's just part of the fee as we run it. So I think it's kind of an all or none if you were gonna do it that way. We did add checks though, and it's a dollar a check. So running those online, that might take a lot of people too. You know, it's, for some people, it's a lot cheaper for a dollar to pay your $2,500 in taxes than it is to pay two and a half percent.
So tell me, Jody, I remember talking to Access Idaho guy, but I can't remember all of it. He was saying some of this stuff is gonna go away because we are using Access. Do you remember?
He was, he was saying they're kind of in the works. They're hoping what they can do is the other departments, right now, I believe, pay 3%. And because the county all runs on the same, that they're, they'll try to get everyone else locked in at two and a half percent also. So the other departments will see that decrease. But Tyler just is taking over courts, and so there's gonna be this integration with the court system with them.
I don't know personally, I think that's too much for the county to take a hit on because we know a solid waste is probably almost that much as well. I can remember somewhere seventeen thousand.
We pay about two, any five, on a high month, $3,500 for the Murphy's.
A month?
Uh-huh.
I don't know, I understand what you're trying to do, but I don't know if it's really gonna...
No, it wasn't me. It was just an idea that came up, so...
It was an idea to help with foot traffic with COVID, flu, people sick, masks. How do you... And this was before I even, that was before I even pulled up numbers. What we, you know, even pay.
Well, people have the option just to write a check.
They do. And we had last year when we were, when we were shut down, people were able to leave it with the deputy. I mean, they can do that again, and if the deputy wants to just call up, we're more than welcome, or more than to go downstairs and grab it. They call and say, hey, we've got a payment down here. Go grab it. I know they sometimes like to get up and move, so they'll run it up to us, get a receipt.
Okay. And you guys don't take cash, right?
We do.
Well, you do take cash?
Cash, card, check. Any way you want to pay us, you can pay some pennies, we'll take it.
What's your pleasure?
Yeah, I, I just don't know that it's gonna save enough people coming in to absorb that expense.
That's a big amount for us to absorb.
This is an action item. We need a motion.
I'll make a decision then that we...
You just don't move on it, right?
You don't move on it?
No motion, no movement.
No movement? Sounds like my plan. Okay, thanks, Jody.
Any pretty idea though, it was definitely worth the conversation.
Yeah, we're gonna move on down to our next agenda. These are also action items. First one up is the proven sign workman's comp drug-free workplace certificate. Pat, I'm assuming you're bringing that one forward?
I am. So we just need to test that we have a workplace, a respectful workplace policy, and that we follow it. And so I just need a sign, approval, and somebody was tall here, approval and signature for it.
We do this every year.
I'm assuming.
I don't know if we've ever done this before, have we?
I don't know, but I didn't feel comfortable signing it. I felt like it should be...
I'm glad you are because it's, I think it helps with our insurance, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does, yeah. It asks about implementing the following proactive testing procedures. I can fill that in. It's just, it's pre-employment random, reasonable suspicion, and after accident. So I'll make sure that gets filled in. I just need a signature, and that's really all I need for it. It's just, it's just certifying that we maintain an employer alcohol and drug-free workplace pursuant to Idaho Code Section 721701. And that because we do, we get a 5% premium credit.
And do we also still qualify for the ICRAIM deal, the 8%? Are we doing that?
Well, it's not 8%. They've changed it up.
Oh, great.
Yeah, and so instead of doing, like, we'd have to go in, everybody'd have to do all this training, and this and that and another. They've changed it, and we have to do certain things, like I had to do an HR audit. The sheriff's office has to do certain things that they have to work with ICRAIM on. And then IT also has to do the same thing. And then they determine what the percentage is going to be after that, so...
ICRAIM was asking if we have done cybersecurity training recently. I think so.
Yeah, everybody's had to go through that. They do it when they're a new employee, and then IT was, if there was an issue, would make you go through it too. So that's directly Jeremy's area.
Now, we really need to kind of talk to Jeremy.
Risk management, I need to get involved in that one.
I think we need to talk to Jeremy about that because there's a strike three policy that you have to include that if you do it three times in a row, you're out. So there's some pretty serious stuff to come down. They also informed us that they're no longer gonna cover security liability. I think the most they'll pay is $50,000.
On cybersecurity?
So if we have a...
For ransomware.
For ransomware, we have $150,000. It comes right out of general funds, so we'll work with Jeremy on that. Okay, I need a motion then to approve and sign the workman's comp drug-free certificate.
Move that we sign the worker's comp drug-free workplace certificate.
I'll second that.
Good to second. Any more discussion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Will you all three sign it?
This is this annual, but I really don't recall seeing this.
No, I've never, never this at all.
I guess somebody else was signing it.
Just one page?
Yep, that's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, next item is also an action item. Approve increased starting pay rate for the new office support specialist in the road department and the new deputy prosecuting attorney and planning and zoning technician.
Okay, well, the planning and zoning is a little different, so I'll start with the other two.
Okay.
So we have in the road department, somebody that has inventory experience. So they've actually had to start a new inventory program and has all kinds of experience around that. So because of that experience and because they should be able to basically hit the ground running once we have that inventory system in place, we are requesting that we give them 1617 an hour instead of the 1517. So it'll be a dollar more.
To 1617?
1617. So let's do that one first, and then I'll go to the next one. Or do you want to go both together?
We can do this one now. Any questions or comments if not an entertaining motion? I think it's great you found somebody that's already knows.
Yeah.
So why, so if it's in Jeff's budget and he is the director, why does it need to be, have our approval? That's always my question.
Because you all asked me to do it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, perfect. Oh, there's that.
Just so we know, basically, just so we know.
Okay.
Keep us in the loop.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion, oh, sorry.
It's been a problem in years, years past, so that's why it happens.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we approve the increased starting pay rate for the new office support specialist in the road department.
Second.
On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Prosecuting attorney.
Again, I know, again, this person comes with, currently what she's doing is prosecuting murder cases in Illinois. So she comes with some huge experience on the criminal side. We're very lucky to have somebody with 13 years, 12 years, anyway, a whole bunch of years of experience in a prosecuting attorney's office, albeit it's been in another state. But she is, she has passed the bar in Idaho, so she is licensed to practice in Idaho as well. She does have housing here, she has family here. So the prosecuting attorney and I agreed was asking if we could bring them in at 3605.
Versus what we budgeted, which was?
Oh, for heaven's sake, I didn't write that down.
Thirty-two, wasn't it?
Thirty-two, I think is the beginning. This is, this is right, right about, right below the midpoint. So it's right in that minimum to midpoint range.
We can get somebody with that experience, that's possible.
Oh, yeah, and we don't have to start with somebody fresh out of law school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's only 75 grand. Are you sure that's right?
Yeah, it's right.
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion for that one.
Move that we approve the increase for the deputy prosecuting attorney.
I'll second that.
Good to second. On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Have to be careful with these pay ranges because we have to give them room to move as we move the ranges up as well. And we can't, we don't want them to come in higher than what our current civil chief deputy is. So it's, it's a, it's a dancing game for sure.
Okay, now we'll move on down to P&amp;Z technician.
Okay, so we're really not asking on this one, we're not asking to pay the person higher. What we're asking for is to move the pay range up. And so what happened was that we were going through budget, and when Cindy first presented the job description, it looked really administrative. And then we go through the process, and she got to thinking about it. Brought the job description back, it was actually higher than what I first thought it was going to be. And so it just got missed in the budget process because, yeah, there's just so many moving parts. I mean, I missed it. It was my mistake. So what we need to do is currently, that one is at $16 an hour, is where the pay range begins. We need to move that pay range up to 17 and a quarter. It will, it will not affect her budget. She has it in her budget to be able to pay that. So the person coming in will start at that lower level at the beginning because they don't have, you know, a plethora of experience in this position. So we do have a candidate in mind. We, I just need to fix this pay ranges. So it is different than the other ones.
So I'll make the motion then that we authorize the change of pay range for the planning and zoning technician.
Second that.
Good to say. Need any more discussion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you. The directors and elected officials thank you as well.
So glad to have you here to deal with this stuff. It's so nice.
Well, and it's hard because salaries are never easy, and you have to hold the line where things need to be, so, thank you.
Hey, thank you, have a great day.
I'm applying for that job. I'd like to work for Cindy. They make more than we do.
Thank you, everybody does.
Pat, would you get Sheri an application for that job?
Does that mean, but then she'd have to resign from the mission.
Well, you can't have all of it, you know, you gotta cut the line somewhere.
What's more to do?
Yeah, I mean, it could be possible she couldn't do both, but the application's online, Sheri.
It's a true statement.
I think we're the lowest paid now, I think, in the whole county, just about.
Well, you're not lowest paid, but we really need to work on that.
Okay, we're gonna move on down. It's a little early, but I think we can do this. Next item is an action item. This is to sign the 2021 Local Highway Safety Improvement Program Grant Group Project. Holy smokes.
Say that again?
Make up these Jeffs, or is that...
I just made it up.
Safety Improvement Program Group Project.
Okay.
What is this?
What are we doing? Local Highway Sec... Okay. So this is the sign grant that I applied for two years ago. We got it. COVID hit. Boing, boing, boing. Next year, next year. Gotta get this signed. We have a dollar amount now. They're working on getting the signs ordered.
How much is the dollar amount?
I sent it to you. Um, estimated project costs 80,000.
Holy smokes!
But by the time everything comes out of it, we're left with, uh... So we, LTAC will do the project development, which is 10,000. Construction engineering, which is 10,000. And then I haven't, I told them we would put the signs up, but I think part of this grant is for them to hire the sign company to come and put them up. We end up with about 60,000 to buy the signs.
Well, I think this is great. I'm amazed it's that much money. One of the things we need to talk about sometime today is Norwood and Johnson.
Can't help peoples, nevermind, can't say it.
Well, we need to say there's a stop sign up ahead or something, or...
There is.
There is?
Yeah.
And they'd still blow through it.
So there is signage that say, that says stop sign ahead?
Yep, about 300 feet before you get to it. But the direction that the... I don't know if this is secondhand I've read or what, but the gentleman that ran the stop sign was going west to east on the dirt section of John...
What I was just saying, that's getting busy because they're building a bunch of houses over there now.
Yep.
So is there a stop sign ahead on that?
I don't know. Might have to put one up there.
Yeah, they might want to think about that.
But my neighbor, he totaled his pickup there a month and a half ago. He just wasn't paying attention.
I was gonna say, I know that stop sign creeps up on you if you're going from Franklin to Norwood.
There's a stop ahead sign, and that might be one extra money to put a little blinky thing on it. That's a dangerous one. My brother lives right there, and it's just... That'd get people to pay attention. Good luck.
Well, now we have 80,000 or 60,000 to do that. Maybe we can put a sign there.
So I have to... We've got, when we did this, we had three fatality corners I had to deal with. One on Big Creek Summit, one on West Mountain. Uh, I can't remember where the other one was.
Where's the one on West Mountain, Tamarack?
Yeah, it was a horse that killed his wife and daughter.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's, there was no reason for him to go off there, but I have to do something to that corner to... And the one on Big Creek Summit, same thing. It's just somebody not paying attention and ran off the road.
That'll do it, and that's a good road to run off right there.
Yeah. I can't remember where the other one is. But this is allowing us to get... I can't remember how much the signs are for the S Bridge, but they're pretty fancy. They've got a radar, humidity sensor, temperature sensor. So when all the parameters meet, ice on the road, it starts flashing.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve this. I'm not even gonna say it again. Safety Improvement Program Group Project.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second. On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
How much maintenance goes into those fancy machine, uh, signs?
The good thing about it, they run Wi-Fi, so I can just take my phone out there. I spend an extra $400 per sign, I can get traffic counts off of it, speeds off of them.
It'd be good to get traffic counts on that S Bridge. It's worth, worth spending the money on that for sure.
That S Bridge, we gotta do something to turn that first goal. It better help us.
We need to straighten it all out right now. I don't know why they built it that way. Making ass something like that, not go straight across?
This way the bridge is only 60 feet wide. You run it parallel to the creek.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Did creek determine how wide the bridge is?
That's why a lot of our country culvert car, the creek comes down. And you can see where it's supposed to go, but they took the culvert and ran it straight across. It's cheaper. We got ten, there's only 20 cars a day that went across it.
Yeah.
And then we got 23,000 cars a day.
If you want the seal on it, if you could just take that down to the clerk's office, they can stamp it.
It's a seal, so we'll get it on there.
Okay, the next one up, Jeff, is to sign the IH TACT2 Local Rural Highway Investment Program Project. Is that document summary with that?
So this is the closeout for Xenocreek for the emergency money. And we have to, we'll end up having to pay them back $14,000, which we've already got a claim form out for. They only gave us 50, they gave us the money for the bridge and the asphalt. It only came to $54,000 or something like that.
But you paved that with our new paver, didn't you?
Yeah.
So that's where the savings...
Well, I had to buy the asphalt.
But that's where the savings came from?
Yeah, and it was, yeah, that's exactly what it was.
Okay, I need a motion to approve that.
Move to approve and sign the IH TACT2 Local Rural Highway Investment Program Project.
I'll second that.
Good to second. On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
We're overlaying East Lake Fork right now.
Yay.
Hey, I was there this morning, wondering when.
It's a real thing we didn't figure out, because we were gonna finish paving West Lake Fork, with 1,600,000 pound trucks rolling down the north lane. Not a lot of damage, but we're fixing that today.
So, say that again, on West Lake Fork?
West Lake Fork. We got one lane paved Thursday. Almost the whole lane. We're missing, I don't know, 800 feet or something like that. Friday, we're gonna pave westbound lane. And all those heavy trucks rolling on that side, it just started just pushing it out. And so we're up there fixing that today while they're over there fixing East Lake Fork. I got every, everybody on my crew up there on those two projects right now.
So who are the trucks that caused the damage?
Valley paving.
Yeah, it's all...
It's not their fault.
Oh, got it, okay.
Yeah, because that road was pretty solid. We've never really tested roads for hardness before we pave, and I'm gonna start.
Meter duct test?
But that's the side they widened the road on 60 years ago because it used to be probably a little wagon road, kind of like Hasbrook Lane or any of those roads. They were 16 feet wide maybe, and all the widening happened on that side. And that's, you can see the line all the way down through there where it's just...
They just scooped the dirt and pulled it over, started driving on it, basically, well, they did, it was probably really wet.
Is there a way you can get enough pavement to fix the stuff on, on the market?
Yep, we'll be doing that this week.
Jeff, how's it going on the bypass for the construction? Any, any complaining? I haven't heard a word from anybody.
West Lake Fork, everybody's fine with it.
No, I mean down at Smith Ferry.
Oh, I haven't heard a word.
Haven't heard a word either.
Well, once in a while, I'll hear Mickey take a phone call, and she tries to direct them to ITD, and they're like, well, it's in Valley County, it's your guys' responsibility. No, it's not.
Takes a while for them to understand. And everything else is good? Everybody's healthy?
Yeah, I think everybody's, everybody's back to work. I'm probably gonna shut the back country down this week. I'm gonna run back there tomorrow and just run through Bear Valley real quick and make sure there's nothing that needs to be fixed. I gotta get that other grader and water truck out here because we're all in behind.
Yeah, my road could use it.
A lot of roads can.
Jeff, the recycling center, we had a long conversation this morning. Do you guys, what is the plan, or did you get to the recycling center?
Haven't gotten to it yet.
So what is your plan?
I don't know.
Would you be okay if we just went...
I can put three-inch rock in there, but that's gonna make a bunch of people mad too.
But we're thinking about, Jeff, using an outside contractor to do that work so you don't have to be bothered by it. Would that be all right with you? Using an outside contractor to do that work, so you don't have to be bothered by it, would that be all right with you?
Let me go look at it. I mean, we can put a bigger rock in there.
I think some of it's gotta be dug out. It's just sink, the rock's just sinking.
Who's paying for it? Me, Lakeshore, you?
Probably us through the recycle deal.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's not gonna be Lakeshore, it's not probably gonna be in your budget this year.
But the problem is, how much money are we gonna put into this before getting an engineer to look at it to say, otherwise, we're just gonna keep throwing money at it?
Yeah.
Because right now, if we build the road up coming in a little bit, it's gonna trap water between the exit road and the entrance road. I put a culvert in, where's the water gonna go? I put a culvert in, then that means I gotta bring in that much material. Lake Fork pit run would probably work, and we have it right there.
Well, it's kind of your call, because I know you're busy right now, and I'm willing to go out with an outside person to do that if you don't have time. You let us know if that's what you wanna do.
I'm going up there this week and take a look at it, 'cause I was actually able to drive by it that day, it was snowing and raining up there. Kinda got it in my head on what needs to be done, but I think we need to X out about a foot of it on a day that, what day they closed up there, Mondays?
Yeah, I think, you know, even to go with an outside person, though, Jeff's the one that's gotta make a call on what needs to be done. And that's, I think, where we're stuck.
Well, we're still waiting on the engineering, I mean, that's, yeah.
Just won't return the call.
If we can't get engineering, we just gotta come up with a temporary solution on it, 'cause we can't do another year of...
We need to-
Mud bogging through there.
Yeah, you gotta do something this fall. Parametrics, if they won't, I mean, they are the county engineer that works with our road department, if we can't get a response from them, do we need to go out and see if there is another engineering firm that we need to be working with? I mean, they have to give us some attention.
We can spend all sorts of money, but the question is again, who's gonna pay for it?
We'll find, we'll find whatever it is, I mean, it's in the recycling line, there's money in the recycling.
Recycling, we could pay some of that expense.
Yes, definitely.
I thought we were doing an engineering study on that, I thought that was already processed.
They have their, their offices cut down because of this stuff.
He's just too busy responding, Jeff, he's been trying to talk to him for sixty days and ninety days.
Oh, at least, at least probably about four months.
That's what I was gonna say, we started talking about this like in April.
Yeah.
And you said, you'd reach out to him, you reached out to him.
Yeah, I can contact Crest Line or CSASH or, it's not gonna be that much to come in and give me some shots and... Yeah, that whole thing was kinda built wrong. Should've had a study before we even started on it to tell us what we needed to do. I thought it was gonna be solid enough. Concrete's on good, solid stuff, but...
Maybe we do just need to reach out to somebody else and see if you can get some response from somebody and get them-
It might be just easy to go on there on, when they're closed, with a big excavator and a couple dump trucks, and just pull stuff out, throw some fabric in the bottom, and build it back up. We can't build up from where we're at right now because of the concrete pads already there.
One thing that Scott had said this morning is there's a big re, or a big, uh, tube in the ground where the gate-
The gates, yeah.
Connects, so if you're in there-
Center post for those gates.
That's what holds the gate open, or is that what holds the gate closed?
I think that's what it pivots or hinges on.
Yeah.
It's the hinge part of the gate.
No, there's a, there's a pipe in the ground where they-
It should be a little down.
Yeah, they close it up. I can't remember if that's a center close or if that's...
If it was in the center, then cars would be ripping their oil pans off.
Well, it doesn't stick up that far.
Oh.
I just wanted to make sure you didn't dig it up.
Oh, oh.
If you were blading or grating, yeah.
Might just have to figure out how deep it is and just pull it out and re-put it in. Okay.
Well, let us know here pretty quick if you can't, don't have time to do it, and we can go another direction. But we gotta at least get it so it'll survive the winter.
It'll survive the winter, it's gonna be froze up.
Between now and then, it's gonna be pretty ugly.
It's next spring that we're transferring our calls to you.
Yeah. Okay, I'll see what I can come up with, I'll, when's there Thursday, I'll run up there.
And if you have some cost in it, Jeff, let us know, we, I think we can reimburse some of that cost, it's not, I know it's not fair to ask you to do it.
Yeah, it's not really the money, it's the time.
It's the time, and if you don't have time, let us know.
We're trying to get willows up in some of the higher country that's gonna freeze up on us, trying to get roads bladed. We'll see what happens.
Okay.
I have to go list about that long and stuff I gotta get done before the snow flies.
Okay, well, let us know.
Okay.
I'd like my list.
Yeah.
Maybe not quite as big.
Yeah, it's a-
Scale-wise.
See you on Wednesday.
Still having trouble ordering vehicles.
There's an article in the news about it.
I was gonna say, that's big news right now.
All over.
I mean, I budgeted a brand-new pickup for the mechanics. Fifty-five hundred, long chassis, already got the work bed for it, we bought used, been trying since March. And Kathy, she really doesn't wanna deal with the big, heavy commercial vehicles. Fun dealing with Mountain Home Auto Ranch, me and Stretch went down there when we had to go down to Peterbilt, pick up the new truck. We had a couple hours to, we ran down to Mountain Home Auto Ranch, and it's one of the biggest dealers in Idaho, and I bet they only had half the cars on that lot that they should have. It, it looked like a Walmart parking lot with cars spaced out twenty feet between cars.
Called Dave Smith out of Kellogg. I don't know if you've dealt with them.
Never dealt with him.
So, the guys that process their titles up there said they process almost four hundred titles a day.
Wow.
A guy who's got lots all over up there.
Problem is, he's not on the state bid list.
Yeah, I bet he's not.
I, I talked to the main guy down at Mountain Home Auto Ranch, and on the state bid, he goes, he goes, "I make a hundred dollars off the sale."
Oh, wow.
And they can't, they don't know when they're gonna get it, 'cause they don't have government pricing yet. I bug them every week. I wanted to get my two one tons coming. Plus asked them if they wanna get involved in Larry's pickup that I'm gonna order for him. Nope, we're not gonna guess at the price, so, at these, bids are out on Larry's, we open those next, next week, I think. Fourteenth or thirteenth, whatever that day is.
Whatever, whatever ended up on the truck with the transmission on, little daughter.
We're fixing it.
That's at the transmission shop now?
No, we just bought the stuff, he got it all put together, and the way that thing exploded, we, we don't know what happened. I mean, it broke the bell housing in about eight pieces. Transmission still worked, transfer case totally exploded.
It got pretty, pretty tense in there, didn't it?
Pete got everything put back together, put it in, was putting oil in it, and found a crack in the transmission. Now we're putting another transmission in it. It, it's about, I don't know, four thousand dollars plus labor, but there's no way to point finger at anybody on it, it... I mean, that transmission was only, I think it only had fifteen hundred miles on it, we just replaced it.
Your new employee, do you have everything set up and ready for them to go? You got a computer and desk and all that good stuff?
Pretty much it. It's not a real good workspace, so I got it in the budget, when, I've already told her when she starts to get in the book and find a desk. It'll fit in that space and what's usable for her. We gotta take it in for a big monitor, 'cause we've still got the old one that's about that size.
Where are you putting her?
Right behind Mickey, at that spare desk right there. Yep. Yep, she'll do good, she's, I've known her a long time, and she's, she's a go-getter. When she told us she's taken two companies that started inventory programs from the ground up, and Pat was just like, "Oh, my gosh, wow."
Sounds like our person, yeah.
Yeah, heaven sent, yep.
That's great.
Yeah, it'll be good.
Has Jeremy decided on your software yet?
No, we got one more scheduled to look at in the next, we looked at one, not last Friday, but it's Friday before. And he said we had one more to look at in the next couple weeks. I haven't heard anything.
When Sylvia's starting?
Huh?
When is she start, isn't it Sylvia?
No, it's, uh, Sarah.
Sarah, when is she starting?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yep, she'll be up here doing all of her orientation till eleven o'clock or twelve, or however long that takes, and...
We need to get Jeremy to make a decision here shortly, and...
Got one more to look at, the last one we looked at a week ago or whenever it was, that was just way, way too big for us.
I wasn't impressed with that one at all.
That was, uh, city of Salt Lake, city of Portland. I mean, they had, keep track of your manholes, keep track of your trees. Keep track of your sidewalks, and I had to stop the guy, go, "We're getting this for maintenance?" You know, pricing, keeping a cost, and he just, thi- this guy, he was a true salesman. I mean, he switched gears so darn fast and stopped talking about roads and went straight to the vehicle equipment maintenance stuff, and I, that, you could tell that guy had his ducks in a row. It's something way, way bigger than what we need. Even if it is the same price, we just, it's too big for us.
All right, we'll get the one you want.
Yep, gotta get one that works and we need, not want, it's a need.
Well, maybe Sarah can actually go through both of those, you know, the next one, and then go back to the, what was the first one, I don't remember what the first one was called?
Fix it or fix-
Yeah, fix it or something.
Yeah.
Maybe she could go and do both of those, um, presentations again?
Be nice.
And help make that decision, that would probably be a good call.
Yeah, 'cause that first one we looked at, I can't even hardly remember. Problem with spacing these things out, I can't remember.
Too much in between?
That far back, we got way too much in between.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, feels like it was eight months ago, and we talked about the first one.
Yeah.
Jeff, I met with Perpetua last Thursday, and their, their strong plan now is to build Burt Long Road and not use Johnson Creek. They're really pushing for that, but that decision hasn't been made permanently by the Forest Service, but that's the goal that they're shooting for is Burt Long Road. And I said, "Well, if you guys are gonna use Johnson Creek, we're gonna have you do some paving on at least the steep part of it." And she said, "We don't really wanna use Johnson Creek, we don't wanna have to drive through Yellow Pine with all of our stuff," and so...
So even during the construction period?
No, they're still using Johnson Creek for construction, yeah.
So they still need to do something with Johnson Creek if they're gonna be running...
At least that on the-
...trucks a day in and out of there.
On the steep stuff, I think you're right, I never thought about that.
I met with them also, and, uh, sounds like they were making the rounds, I was talking broadband.
They didn't reach out to me. Maybe there's a conflict, 'cause I'm on that review board.
I was talking broadband with them mainly, but, um, I did, or we did talk about roads, too, and I, I basically told them, "We're gonna ask you to improve Johnson Creek."
Yeah, just in places.
What did they say about broadband, do they have broadband all the way back there?
They are, or they're actually gonna join our broadband group, but there is a, I can update you guys on broadband, but there is a section that, uh, Midville Telephone is gonna actually build from Cascade back to Warm Lake. 'Cause they want to improve their, uh, availability to both Yellow Pine and Warm Lake, so they're actually gonna be building that out. And then there's a whole program that we need to talk about between, really, Grangefill and Smith Ferry, so, more to follow on all that.
Oh.
The other thing you should know is I met with Idaho County Commissioners, and they want to give us CSASH Warren and South Fork Landing. And, because they realize that we're providing all the service, and I said, "Well, what about, um, French Creek? Or what about, cut down to the river?" "No, we want that, because we can service that from our side."
Why can't they service, all they gotta do is go up the road another ten miles and continue through CSASH?
We're in the process of trying to figure out agreeing on what chunk of ground, and then we gotta talk to all the property owners and if they wanna do this, and see where it goes, but they're... They finally relented that, we need to get that over to Valley County, because we can't take care of those people. Skip was very adamant, Skip-
Who?
Skip Brandt.
One of the commissioners?
Yeah.
I think all of them are on board now to change that county boundary. We'll get the tax base with it, too, so, we'll just...
And if we come up with an agreement on the area and the chunk of ground and all that, then, then we have to get either Terry or Stephen Thane to carry the legislation to get it changed. We're a ways out yet, I just want to keep you in that loop.
So do we need to go have them fix it before we take it? Make sure all the culverts are...
I would absolutely say they need to do-
Five or ten years old, and nothing ready to go, it's just like that Firdon Boulder Lake. Luckily, we seen, I seen that small print in there, once taken, you will replace the two thirty-six inch culverts. There's twenty thousand dollars.
Maybe.
And I think it'll bring a lot of value to our books. I'm not against it, but I wanna make sure that you-
So it's paved all the way to Bergdorf Junction, and then Idaho County, or probably through a Western Federal Lands deal, rebuilt and gravelled pretty much all the way to Chinook Campground. And the Forest Service re-gravelled and reworked, uh, Long Gulch, Mayflower Creek Crossing, Hess replaced that with a big box culvert seven or eight years ago. Not that bad of a road, but we're having trouble keeping up. I mean, our, our roads everywhere are just getting tore up by all this extra traffic.
Well, there's definitely a larger conversation to be had about what, you know, those tax dollars would go for, 'cause really, the main, the main thing back there would be to improve the road base. I mean, there's not a lot of other services in that area.
I can see opening CSASH Summit, lading through CSASH Meadows, lading all the way, except for that chunk of Forest Service back in there, in the spring, when we open the road. Because Idaho County can't come up, get to Bergdorf that way, so they gotta haul all of their equipment all the way around through McCall. I can see doing it once a year in the spring.
It's not just about the roads. I mean, they have, uh, an ambulance, a hospital-
Yeah, it's law enforcement, EMS, all of our services are going up there.
Oh.
I mean, there's, right now, not much law enforcement, because they have to come from Grangefill.
It's not, it's an entire service, you know, area, but...
It's faster to get there from Grangefill than it is Cascade. I don't know.
You're sounding a little negative right now.
It'll be a discussion.
Well, I just wanted to make sure you knew that was kind of in the pipeline coming. And we want your input on that one as well, and I appreciate what your input on the CUP last week on P and Z, that's what you gotta do, I think that's...
Yeah.
And then they can come up with what they're gonna do.
I met with them onsite out there, the developer and the engineer, and they didn't like it, but said, "This is what, you're putting eighty-one lots in here, how many concrete trucks? How many rock trucks? It, it's gonna fall apart." Putting all the burden on him, and there's other people building in there, tearing the road up, too, I don't know, it's...
Okay, eighty-one lots, he can, he'll recoup it.
I'm glad I'm not sitting up there with you three.
You can have it anytime, man, you can have it anytime.
No, no. Okay.
Okay, we gotta move on, thanks, man, have a good day.
Thank you.
Okay, our next gen, the item is an action item, this is assigned the IH Crimp Public Entity Policy Twenty Twenty-two, Twenty-one Twenty-two. Mr. Miller?
Mr. Chairman, I did include that in the packet, or I believe it was in your packet for review. Much to add, unless the Commissioners have some questions.
Well, when you miss a week, you're so far behind, you can't find anything.
That was from Gabby, I think.
When was that?
Part of the full packet. Came from Gabby, and it was on the twenty-ninth. Four twenty. There's just a bunch of clarities and reductions and... There's just a bunch of priorities and reductions and. It had that cyber liability endorsement reduction. So they had ransomware in Twin Falls County. They had to pay a fee of, what was it at the end of that? Hundred fifty thousand? And ICrip only covered the first fifty.
Crazy.
Yeah. But they were locked out all their stuff for like seven weeks.
Wednesday.
They had a bunch of recommendations on our backups, which we probably need to plan for in budgets. Need to ask Jeremy.
Don't have that.
Don't have the packet?
Nope. Well, I think I got Wednesday's from Scott Gardens.
I'm going to just fore-read you a little packet.
Sure, if you don't mind, thanks. I got their agenda. Grab Commissioners.
Doug, do we re-sign this? It looks like it's an update just of their policy from.
Correct.
Eleven-thirty, executive sessions may very well get canceled. They can't. The week can go on and I can discuss it. Don't have the final clarity yet. Waiting now.
So Doug, have you read this? What's the gist? This is just a normal renewal or the?
Is there, and then there were some modifications that were made?
Anything you didn't like?
No, the, you might want to just, uh, refer to the summer summary of policy changes. I think it gives you a brief overview of the changes that were. Give me a minute. And then the reduction was under surety bond, surety agreement.
Some late-night reading here. Did you happen to look, did they get this house on that we bought? Is it on here too?
Yes.
It's on there?
Okay.
I know one time we forgot to do that. Good God, it just goes on and on and on. Okay, so I entertain a motion then to approve the ICrip Public Entity Policy.
I'll make the motion that we sign and approve the ICrip Public Entity Policy for Twenty One to Twenty Two.
Second.
Who does second? Any more discussion? You guys read all this, though. That's great. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hey, our next agenda item is also an action item. This is to approve submitting Imagine Idaho Grant for Middle Mile Planning. And I think.
So Mary is not here, so I'll make this one. Um, Imagine Idaho is a broadband nonprofit who is working with the State of Idaho's broadband task force right now. And they are doing planning grants in preparation for the construction money that should come from ARPA and the infrastructure bill. And so right now, what we have is we are paying, um, Devin Cox, Bruce Patterson from, I don't remember the name of the company, I'll tell my head. They're out of Utah. They are our consultants. And we have paid them to do a very specific task, and that is to help us create a plan for where our gaps are in the county. And we're, we've been working heavily on that. We're making a lot of progress, by the way. Um, but there is a ten thousand dollar, uh, um, basically, it's a research portion of this that the city of McCall is participating with. And that will actually tell us how much it's going to cost to take broadband to the home. So Imagine Idaho is telling us, you know, get that grant in for the ten thousand. We're going to write for five thousand. City of McCall's writing for five thousand. And then that actually puts us into their framework to write grants for the construction build-out later. So we really want to be in their top ten. They're going to be working with ten communities through this next series of funding. And we really want to be part of that top ten, but we have to do a planning grant in order to be there. And so if we can write a grant for this five thousand, I think is what it ended up being, and it may change just slightly because Bruce had, he'd been helping write it. And he had emailed me over the weekend and said that we may have to change just a couple of things in the verbiage. Um, but that, you know, we were really close and then we could move forward on it.
And then if there's any match money, we can use ARPA funds?
Yes, we can.
We don't know what that match is going to be.
I don't think that there will be a match on this one. These grants are, most of them are just real small planning grants, two to five thousand. And they are working with the broadband task force in order to actually, um, I think they're actually being paid from that task force, if I remember right.
Doug, didn't we get CARES Act funds?
CARES Act funds, we did. We do not have access to.
We didn't use it for broadband?
Correct.
The last question.
We were supposed to be using it for the website. We.
We did.
We did use the CARES Act for the website, approved that.
The last question here is not related to broadband. That's why we said no.
What page are you on?
The last, the bottom of it that Mary sent out this morning is a question that we have not applied or received any CARES Act fund.
Oh, correct.
And we have. We just haven't used it for any broadband stuff. Does that make sense? Want to make sure we don't get into trouble there.
Oh, yeah. I think this is specific to the broadband.
The broadband.
Didn't see the city of Cascade sign on for this, or they?
They have not yet. They actually are part of our broadband working task force. And there, there's so much right now that, that is in moving pieces that we're not ready to publicly roll out that whole thing because there's a lot of moving parts right now with a lot of different players. Um, but they are, they did not sign on to this. McCall is actually requesting it as part of the Rapid Project, so they currently already have a project in place which, which impacts this. And then Valley County is taking the lead on the other. And we actually have a new group that's called Wilder, or West Central Mountains Fiber Network. Is what we're working toward. We're, um, Ryanoke is working on an MOU for us for all of the communities to sign on to, and that's at what point the rest of the communities will jump on board. So we're actually trying to put together an MOU with all of the governmental agencies to work collaboratively together to, um, create broadband throughout the region.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's really exciting. We've got major players. I just got a, another, um, text from a gentleman and that I met down at IAC. So all of the major people are coming right now to, to Valley County. And we're trying to figure out how we can put everybody on the same page, working collaboratively, to make sure that it reaches everywhere it needs to reach.
I'd appreciate that at my house, so I'll make the motion that we.
We'll get there, hopefully.
Approve submitting the Imagine Idaho Grant for the Middle Mile Planning.
Well, second.
Thirty.
Um, Sherry, just one question on the thirty thousand. You have that as local cash?
So we already put that in. That's what we've already committed.
That's what I was trying to remember is what we.
We're currently.
Did we do more than thirty? Didn't we do fifty? Just thirty?
Yep. We capped it at thirty, and they're actually trying to bring it in a little bit less than that, but.
Thank you for reminding me.
Entry.
Okay, it's been moved to second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Is there anything for us to sign?
There is none, Mr. Chairman.
Mary's got something here, but I don't see a signature page on it.
It's an electronic format, so I don't believe so.
So she'll probably end up coming with the electronic signature here before long, but that's okay. Okay, our next agenda item is an executive session. This is an action item. Will I need a motion going to executive session per Idaho Code Seventy-Four Two Oh Six One C?
I move that we go into executive session per Idaho Code Seventy-Four Two Oh Six One C.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Move to second by roll call, please.
Ding, aye.
Mop, aye.
Mr. Brook, aye, and Doug will be in at about eleven-thirty-four.